Checking my junk box. I gotta get better.
Yeah, there was just a few acronyms there.
Even us, you know, we just think how?
Sure.
Like, when's your time?
Or Chris says.
So messed up.
I don't.
That's you smiling.
I know.
Everybody see the little green light on their mic?
Yep.
Is yours on?
Mine was off, too.
Mine's off, too. Two still sits down.
There was, there wasn't another meeting since yesterday, was there?
Probably don't turn them on, or it's on, yeah.
You gotta disable those buttons.
Yeah. Put some paper on them.
Get Steve right on it. Let me know how you do it, Steve.
Kind of like the Bates, you're gonna give the, give Monty the thicker to shut them off, people off.
Yeah. Yeah. And if not, call the meeting to order them, we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under our, indivisible, and for the continued justice for all.
Would the clerk please read the roll?
Commissioner Paugh.
Here.
Commissioner Bowley.
Here.
Mr. Berkeley.
Here.
Mr. Kessel.
Here.
Commissioner Hyman.
Here.
Okay. I see if we have a next item is to approve or amend the agenda. I see we have one more consent item put on here, is that right?
Yes, that's it, just the tobacco licenses, it's consent item number 10. And then this sheet that you see also says it just replaces what's in your packet for item number four.
Oh, okay.
The reason why is we received additional township funds after your packet was produced. Again, this goes with item number four.
Okay, I'll, let's just give me a second, I'll put it in the right order. Supposed to approve the agenda with the addition.
Second.
Any more discussion? With favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion's carried, the agenda is adopted, do we have anybody? I don't know from that and so on, open forum. So. Um, and next up, we're supposed to be having a prison taxation public meeting, and Monty, I guess you got some news for us?
Come on.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think it's apparent that a lot of folks haven't received their TNT partial specific notices. Those contain your projected assessed value and also the meeting dates, times, and places for various TNT meetings, ours, city, if that's applicable, school district, and so on. I don't know necessarily why those haven't been received by our taxpayers. We'll have to have, we'll have to pose that question to our treasurer's office and hopefully they can help us with that. I don't know what the legal implications are of taxpayers not receiving those notices before tonight's meeting. I left a question, Michelle Meyer. Again, I found out about, late afternoon, about three, three thirty, that this is an issue, and I left Michelle a message. So if I learn anything more about that topic, I'll let you know what implications it might have, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I'm prepared to go through this brief credit proposal, if you wanted to skip it, we can skip it, it's up to you all.
Well, I, I think, I think in order to live up to statute, those notices have to go out showing any amount of increase or under taxes caused by any of the taxing jurisdictions. And without that notice going out, that's what, that's what this public meeting is for. And so I don't know what, and with no notice, no one knows about it. The auditor's office, somebody didn't get notices out. Uh, we, you know, I don't know that we, we can go through it, but we're gonna have to do it over again sometime.
Probably have to do it next meeting, I suppose.
Well, we have to make, make sure, we have to publish, get the, we probably, we may have to have a special meeting or do something, you know? But it's gotta be after, what, after six o'clock or seven o'clock in the evening?
TNT portion has to happen at six PM or later.
Six PM or later, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is there a deadline on, on what time of the month it has to be done? Do we have to have it by the fifteenth?
I need to look and confirm what that is. There is a deadline, and I need to, I need to look and let you know what that deadline is. There's a window, a from and a to, and I need to look at the statute to remind myself what that is.
We always know, it's supposed, it's usually done the first meeting in December, as long as I've been.
We've always had, we've always paired it with the first meeting in December, that's true, yeah.
That's correct, right, and, and these meetings were set in January last year already, right?
Uh, that is true, yes, right, and of course, the, tonight's TNT meeting was also announced on September fifteenth, when you adopted proposed budget levy. Uh, so really, the only, only way a person would have known about tonight is if they read our minutes, because under the statute, we're supposed to announce, announce the date, time, and place of the TNT hearing, and it goes in the minutes which are published. And it's also been on our website for a couple of weeks. But I think for most people, the way they find out about this meeting is that partial specific notice that shows up in the mailbox, you know, they look at that.
And without having that, that in front of them, you know, there'd be no reason for them to even, so they wouldn't know about it.
Right, they wouldn't have the benefit of seeing the proposed taxes on their property without that partial specific notice.
That's what the intent of the law was, so I think we're gonna have to do this over again. I don't know what the rest of you think.
So, um, I guess, just looking for your consensus direction, do, do you wanna schedule a second TNT public meeting and then publish that in our newspapers? And, uh, and give folks an opportunity to come in and then address the budget?
Well, I, we have to make sure that they're out and in the mail and gonna be received by people, don't we first have to?
Well, I'm, I'm guessing within the next few days, these are gonna start showing up in mailboxes. Uh, the issue is, is I would imagine if we're gonna have a second meeting, probably would publish something in the papers.
Yeah, we have to do that.
We would do a news release, something like that, you know?
I'm, I'm sure there's notice requirements also by statute that.
Well, you know, the interesting is that there's no, there is no publication requirement for TNT meetings anymore, there used to be, but there isn't. So, uh, we're not bound by any, any statutory timeframe for publication. I think we should just do whatever you think is reasonable.
All right, well, I think we should, soon as you get the, get it done next.
Well, I guess, I'd personally like to wait and see what Michelle, the coming attorney, says.
Yeah, I guess I would, too, we could do it our next, probably our next scheduled meeting if, if the statute doesn't.
Well, we have to have it, member's gotta be in the evening.
Yeah, it's gotta be in the evening, but.
But if the statute allows it to delay until that time, be fine with me.
Correct.
Right, I need to find out is, what is the last date you can have a TNT public meeting?
If it doesn't, we'll have to have a special meeting, I suppose, next Tuesday.
Yeah, and, and what's the notice requirement on the special meeting?
Three days.
Three days, okay, that's what I thought it was.
Well, the way the calendar, the, the calendar's somewhat working in our favor this year, you know, the, the second meeting of the, of the year falls very early, it's the fifteenth. So you have between the fifteenth and the end of the month to adopt the final budget levy. So let's just say you had the TNT hearing, public meeting, you know, around the fifteenth or whatever, you still have the rest of the month to adopt the final budget levy. So there's, there's some, there's some flexibility there in the, in the calendar for us.
All right, so. So is it, is pretty much a consent just to wait until we hear from, and get legal opinion from county attorney on this?
Legal opinion, yeah.
And I, I think that's probably the wise course.
If there's a cutoff date or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll report back as soon as we can, Michelle.
New commissioner elects out there, you probably don't have to wait a little longer to see the budget presentation, so.
Yeah, probably, too, I was just thinking back to, you know, back, uh, I told that story earlier about ten years ago, when the notice wasn't published, we contacted the Department of Revenue. We might wanna do that, too, and get their, their thoughts on this as well, so.
Okay.
About compliance.
Might as well cover all of our bases right away.
Yep.
Sure.
All right. Okay, if, if, if that's all right, we're gonna go on with the consent.
To be continued.
Move on.
Okay. Next up, with consent agenda, item number one, approve or amend the regular meeting minutes November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Item two, accept and file committee of the whole, uh, minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty. Item three, accept and file management team meeting minutes of October eighth, twenty twenty. Item four, approve second supplemental cares funding plan as presented. Item five, approve six-month extension of the filing deadline for a major final plat entitled the Cove Replat. New deadline of June first, twenty twenty-one. Item six, approve final payment to Knife River Inc. for twenty twenty seasonal bituminous overlay. Item seven, adopt resolution approving final acceptance of construction project. State aid project zero zero five, six two zero, zero zero three, reconstruction of Fourth Avenue North and Foley. Item eight, adopt resolution approving final acceptance of construction project S, uh, SAT zero, zero five, S six two seven, zero zero four, reconstruction of Dewey Street and Foley. Item nine, adopt resolutions of support for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, federal transportation projects submitted to Region seven W. CASA one, full depth reclamation from CASA twenty-nine to County Road seventy-eight and CASA two, reconstruction from drunk highway, Highway ten to, uh, State, State Highway one. Item ten, the new one, um, approve a tobacco license application for the following establishments, Midwest Fesment LLC, Minimart, number four and number ten, Speedway four four five three Northern Tier Retail LLC, Pojo Store, Hassel Prezy American Legion Post four seven three, Gilman Liquor Store, and Shady's Railside. These are tobacco applications. Any members want any of these pulled, anything? If not, then a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it, Mr. Chair.
Second, any discussion? All's bearers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, motion's carried. Okay, so that gets us up the commissioner meeting updates, that's gonna go pretty quick, so. Who wants to start?
I can go first, Mr. Chair.
Us, okay.
All of mine were here at the county.
Okay.
I had none, sir.
Uh, didn't we, didn't we have one together?
Well, which one?
Uh, Career Solutions? Wasn't that after the last meeting?
I don't think so.
Didn't we?
We already talked about that one.
Let's see, when did we have that? Career Solutions last month. Joint, was that on the nineteenth?
Yeah, yeah, we've got one coming up this week.
Yep, and our, our meeting was the seventeenth.
Yep.
So we did have one, so I'll, I'll give it.
You'll give it, you love to skip.
All right. Warren?
Uh, just, just one, me and Monty, and Roxanne met, who met last, what, Thursday, Monty, I think, yeah? I think Roxanne sent out, what's about seven, seven, I think she sent out seven, we got three replies back for.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
For our, um.
Building official?
Zone in, zone in, yeah.
Building inspector?
So we got, we got interviews on, what, Thursday?
Yes, yeah.
So we got, we had three, three applied out of seven, she sent down.
Are, weren't are the prices all comparable?
They're all pretty close.
Okay.
Now, one is from Oconia, what's the other one from? I can't, I know one is from Oconia, I think the other one's got an office in St. Cloud, they're both. Way Park, yeah. But we'll, we got interviews on Thursday, probably three of them.
All right.
Yeah, we had Tri-County Solid Waste Meeting, um.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. And they said egg bag issue came up again, and I, they said Sterns County, they're getting quite a bit of them, but I told them.
This side of the river.
Benton County, not so much, and I told them, get ahold of you, and.
Okay.
I told them you're having issues, and I told the director, get ahold of you and see what issues are. It's a, it's a place to host the pickup, I guess is the problem, we need somebody to host that.
And then they got a grant for, did they get a grant for a digester, St. Cloud, or?
Oh, yeah, they, Todd, Douglas and Todd.
They got seven million.
Seven million dollar grant to rebuild their incinerator out there.
Wow.
Big grant.
When, when you were talking about the egg plastic, um, I had talked to Mark a little bit here, that if somebody would want to get like a thirty-yard dumpster, you know, at their place and do a neighborhood pickup, if we could use some score grant money or something for that, but I was gonna wait and see what you guys.
Yeah.
Come up with first.
Play for that, yeah.
I mean, I'm sure everybody would kick in the twenty-five percent.
Yeah. I guess it's working good at the outside, but I'm gonna get this way. Okay, had you, Jake, you got anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Well, last, after, on the seventeenth, I had library meeting, and these li, these library meetings are, this one ran from five o'clock till seven thirty on Zoom. Uh, we had a finance meeting, and we did agree to push about three hundred thousand dollars from twenty twenties budget into the twenty twenty-two budget of surplus that wasn't used from, uh, uh, things that were cut from, you know, staff being out, or we had positions that weren't filled and stuff like that. So, and then that led into the, we had that at five o'clock, and then at six o'clock, we had our regular meeting. And, um, after I gave the finance report, we had, uh, a few people that decided we should give all the staff a bonus because they, um, worked so hard to keep everything up and running during the pandemic. You know, that they got everything out, and this went on for, I give Commissioner Phoby a lot of credit from Sherburne County, we finally cut it and called for the question. And, uh, we, they started at, you know, fifty or a hundred bucks, well, there's two hundred and, you know, sixty-some employees, and they said, well, we could just keep the one, you know, how can you do some? And I said, well, you can't do, you can't pick one part-time and you can't pick a full-time, you know, over that. So then they came down to fifty bucks, they would do it at fifty bucks, even at fifty bucks, it was gonna cost the library like thirteen thousand dollars. And the finance, uh, committee, and luckily, I got all commissioners on that finance committee, plus, uh, Mr. Bertram, and they said that they wouldn't do it, they, you know, there was just no way that we should spend that kind of money. And so it ended up that, um, it got voted down to give them fifty bucks, and it ended up that we're gonna send them a card. You know, and I, I was just along in, and we finally had to cut some of them off because they were so gung ho on, on giving them extra money. So that was that, then Spencer, my, my MICA meeting, I didn't have enough, uh, I don't know, I was up and down all day on that one, so I wasn't there as much, I missed so much. And then we had me and Mr. Bowley had BEP meeting on the nineteenth. Um, and that was a lot about the cares funding and, um, some of the leads that Amanda Ochows got going, I thought, you know, I think that, that program that we got going right there, right now, is really at the top of the, top of its game. I think she's got things going on, and I think we're gonna hear a lot of, a lot of good things in the future for Benton County from her. Um, it was a, you know, kind of a rough decision to, to cut ties with our other one and move on, but I think it was the right decision when you look at what happened here. I think you guys have seen enough to, for, about that, so.
Yeah, I concur with that, Jim.
Um, and that was all that I had, Mr. Chair.
All right, um, Career Solutions, we had our annual audit there, and that was an unmodified or, or clean audit, so nothing unusual. I did have a question on the fund balance that they had, which was only eight point two percent of, and, uh, generally, that's a little bit low, but since these are grant-funded organizations, there's a lot of pass-through, probably isn't too much to be concerned about. Uh, because they do have other, other funds coming in, it's just some crossover, some is fiscal year and some is a calendar year, and so it gets a little messed up. But anyway, that question got answered by the auditor anyway, so it wasn't anything that was to worry about. But Luke, Luke Griner from D, he's their, one of their statisticians, or, and, uh, he gave a report, I think you had it, Stephen, you forwarded, Jake, did he forward that to you? That, uh, Luke, Luke Griner's, yeah, yeah, or Griners, if I pronounce it correct. Yeah, and I, I'm, we're not gonna go on any, any of the details in it, but the unemployment rate was, went from five point nine to four point six, but that was driven exclusively and for no other reason, just baby boomers dropping out of the workforce. That was the only reason that went down. So, um, we'll have to, we'll have to see how that shit shakes out now after the shutdown, because that was just for the shutdown again, too, so. And one of the, uh, programs over there is, is for people to get trained for the CDL license, truck driver licenses, and they're having a lot of people drop out of it, so they decided that what they're gonna do is they have a twenty-minute video now introducing them to what their obligations are and what they'll be expected to do, uh, truck driving. And, uh, that'll be eliminating some, because it's expensive to start them and then have them drop out, so they tried to cover that hole a little bit. And it, and another oddity that's going on over there is that Career Solutions has to meet clients that are, have to, that need a computer, because don't have one or need help on a computer for resumes and those types of things, and job applications, and they have to go to the library to get it, because D won't let us occupy the space we've rented over there. Isn't that crazy? Yeah, so.
And they're actually scheduled to have a meeting with D, I think it's, I think we'll find out Thursday when that meeting's gonna be scheduled to talk about that.
Because that's actually embarrassing to have.
Very embarrassing.
Yeah, to have that happen, but anyway.
Spence, on that, on that truck driving stuff, um, I've heard in the last couple of months that I think it's more about the companies that need drivers are sending them to the one-day deal in the Twin Cities, and they don't have to, they don't have to wait around for two or three or five weeks to get their CDL, they can go to, they send them down there, they get the book material and everything, and they come back with the license on the same day, and I think that's their biggest reason why they're having trouble with the CDL class.
One day?
One day.
Well.
Yeah.
One day.
One day.
So I know that, uh, Career Solution held like a so-called job fair to where they had, uh, Anderson and all these other trucking firms in the area in to help, uh, talk about and discuss the need for CDL drivers to all of these people that wanna take this course. But one day.
But, you know, I don't think truck companies like Anderson are hiring them, but some of these private.
Maybe they had one day to do if they wanted to do it or not.
Yeah.
One day for the written, but you got, uh, on, we had wheel training for weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's not a one-day ordeal.
That must be, that must be just a written part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, 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 it could, could be, yeah.
Yeah, so I think they had fifty applicants, and they were down to like thirty-three, because the other ones dropped out.
Yeah, right away from the, from the video that they had. But that was the largest group of, of, uh, Electrolux employees that got laid off. The biggest single group that went into truck writing. So.
There's a big demand.
Yep, and, uh, the others went into, uh, manufacturing of some support, some, a little higher level of manufacturing, and their wages were something like twenty-one bucks an hour or something.
Yeah, they averaged, so most of the, uh, those af, those people that got deferred.
Yeah.
Their average wage is like twenty-one seventy an hour.
Yeah, so it was, it was good wage, yeah, yeah, so. They're, they're doing a good job, they're getting people through, they're getting them employed, and they're doing what they're supposed to do, and so. Anyway, and then I went to a MICA meeting, and there wasn't that much going on, but we had Jim Scholl Walter from, uh, Management and Budget Director, the new one, for the, for the governor and the state of Minnesota, and he comes with a lot of experience, he actually was under Palenti, Dayton, and now under Walz. So, and, and his comment, I wrote it down here, is that, uh, this is a challenge, he said, it's worse than the challenge of the Great Recession, so, and, uh.
I actually heard the revenues were actually better than they expected.
Right, well, this was on the eighteenth.
No.
See, now, this was before the shutdown, so, so this was stuff after things opened up, and now they're shut down again. So I, and, and so I really think the only budget forecast that's gonna be meaningful at all is the one that comes out in February. That's probably the only one that's, has any room.
One today or tomorrow, I thought, right?
They had one today, yeah, and that had a surplus for the, for the budget year, as I understand. And, uh, but going into the next biennium, it'll, it is where it gets iffy, because that's where the February forecast, that's the numbers they use to set that budget, and that one may be problematic, but we don't know how long this shutdown's gonna last and all these other things that are going on. But, uh, so that was, that was really the big takeaway from MICA, and, and the fact that, you know, the, the, under transportation, Jake, the, uh, really was a good bill, last year was the most money they'd gotten in a long time, and the Senate and the House, neither one of them, they have no change in their transportation shares this year, so that, so that's good, there's a lot of. And, uh, in hu, human health and human services, they're just, they're, they're, they're working to make sure they can keep a lot of the flexibility that they were able to do because of the pandemic, and keep those all the time in their, uh, program delivery, so. Get away from some of the, especially from some of the face-to-face and the drive windshield time, we hear about all the time from our workers having to drive all over the state, you know? So, that's all I have, and any, any commissioner concerns?
Chair, just that we put up yesterday a little bit, but the, you know, we should think about maybe our next meeting leave for the bars, restaurants, for liquor license, and maybe we could just refund liquor license for twenty twenty and help them all a little bit, but something can.
Oh, yeah, okay, you want, you want that to be on the, well, it could be on the agenda next time.
Right, yeah.
I, I should just mention, Mr. Chair, and that is that our fee schedule public hearing is on your December fifteenth agenda.
Okay.
I have to look at the fee schedule, so that's, that's the time to.
Okay.
So I would give then Nadine a heads-up that, that's something you'd like to talk about.
Oh, okay, and, and just see how much relief would be, some, some, uh, numbers with it, too, because I don't know, I don't really know what they pay for.
So I'll, I'll pass it along to Nadine then.
Yeah.
These guys can, you know, help, they can get to survive through this thing, because otherwise, they're gonna have to be.
Okay, yeah.
Left to pay, pay those fees next year.
Yeah, right, yeah, so. Okay, um, any committee of the holes?
We don't have any, any new, and, Mr. Chair, I just kinda like to go back, though, to this issue of a possible special meeting, and, uh, I, I looked on the Department of Revenue website, and, um, you must conclude your TNT meeting by December thirtieth, so we've got plenty of time.
so we've got plenty of time. So, um, of course you must also adopt the, the budget levy by the end of year two, so, um. Couldn't we, I know you'd like me to ask Michelle for her opinion and also Department of Revenue.
Okay.
So let's just assume then I, I bring that information back December fifteenth, and you decide to have a second TNT hearing, then we would put that in the newspaper and probably to give people reasonable enough time, I could see you would have that TNT hearing and your special board meeting to adopt the week of Jan, uh, sorry, December twenty-eighth. So sometime the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth or the thirtieth is when you would have the TNT hearing and your final meeting to adopt the budget levy.
We back you up a week?
Why, why couldn't we do it at the fifteenth?
Um, well, I, i, if, if you wanna do it the fifteenth, I guess just need, I'd need your decision tonight then so we can get the advertisement to the paper. That's the issue, so, uh, if I recall correctly, uh, the two, one publishes on a, on a Tuesday, another on a Saturday. So, um, I would imagine then we could get the notice in the December fifth, end of December eighth papers for the fif, I mean, on the fifteenth.
Plus, plus we have to have it after six PM.
Plus it has to be after six PM, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have two that day or what?
Well, we have county board in the morning.
Yeah.
Or just do them both in the evening, but.
Well, we already did schedule the county board one, that's.
I mean, you can always of course change the, the daytime and place of your regular meeting, so long as you give three-day posted notice.
Okay, that's the last meeting of the year, I think we should leave that fifteenth as the board meeting in the morning.
Yeah.
So do I, I completely conclude that?
And you, you could certainly have a very brief TNT meeting some evenings on its own.
Right. Yeah, we'll have that on the fifteenth in the evening.
So I guess, 'cause the question is, if, if you have a TNT meeting, when would it be?
You want it on the fifteenth or? Fifteenth. At night? At night, yeah, seven o'clock on the fifteenth of December, if we can meet the deadlines and, and if everything works out okay with, uh, Michelle and, uh.
So the fifteenth in the evening, uh, that, I think you would still then, um, need to have a special meeting to adopt the budget levy. Typically, let's put it this way.
Afterwards, yeah.
Could you go ahead and adopt the budget levy on the morning of the fifteenth? Y, yes, you could, but typically you have a TNT meeting first and then you.
And you would.
Because the idea there is you're gathering public input and then you take final action on the budget levy, so you still need a special board meeting to adopt the budget levy.
So unless you did, did the special meeting.
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth in the evening.
Well, you, you don't wanna have it before you have the twelfth.
Excuse me?
No, it would be the TNT, it would be the TNT meeting the fourteenth.
Fourteenth with the ditch meeting. Good night.
Or have the TNT meeting on the evening of the, of the fifteenth and the next morning.
Adopt the budget.
Adopt the budget.
That we could do on the sixth.
That's right, you could do that, you could have a special board meeting that, that morning of the sixteenth, excuse me, yeah, to adopt the budget levy.
Right.
Yeah, that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay.
So let me just recap then, so we'll, um, we'll have a TNT meeting in the evening of the fifteenth at seven PM and then a special board meeting at nine AM on the sixteenth to adopt the budget levy, the final budget levy, and then you'll be done.
Monty, I don't wanna interrupt you, but we have meetings up the sixteenth.
What's that?
We have department head meetings on the sixteenth.
Okay.
At night?
Um, they're in the morning, they're, it's at ten, we're good though.
Okay.
Yeah, it's at ten, so this, this will be very brief, we're just coming into, adopt the budget levy, that'll be ten minutes, yeah.
Perfect.
For budget type option. So we, we, Monty, we still have to have the call on the fourteenth and the set.
Yes, sir, because that's to talk about.
Salaries.
The biggest issue there is talking about salaries, right?
Collected official salaries.
Well, it's two things, is those departments who have fee schedule changes will come in and give you an explanation of those and then you're right, elected official salaries, that's the big issue, but that can be the hole on the fourteenth.
At nine o'clock, right, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Ten thirty's a ditch.
And ten thirty ditch public hearing. Okay.
All right, okay, that, do we need a?
No, I, there's no committees of the hole to set, so no, I don't need any, don't need a motion on any of that, so.
We don't need a motion in any of this, this.
No, that's okay.
All right. So, is there any other business to come for the board? This is not a motion being ordered to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. Back to Mr. Chair.
All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion's carried, we are adjourned.